This meeting will come to order.
Call the roll.
Benjamin.
Here.
Veronica.
Here.
Baylor.
Here.
Kazdorff.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Sardino.
Here.
Tarks.
Here.
Is there anyone desiring to be heard?
Charlie Benjamin, forty-five oh three, West Hampton Sixth Street. I have a question about the change in the permit about the fireworks. Should I reserve that going to discuss that item?
Mr. President? Go ahead.
Okay, well, I noticed that despite the longstanding tradition that we don't have fireworks, unauthorized fireworks in Butler, that the proposed change to implement is to allow fireworks with true mats. Given last year's incredible display on one of the side streets and questioning why we're considering.
And I might bring you back up as well. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard? Consent agenda.
A motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Any communications?
None.
Committee reports, building board.
Billy Moore just concluded their meeting a few minutes ago. We approved an occupancy permit for Metacraft Corporation doing business as the doctor's office at one twenty-seven oh one West Hampton. And we tabled the occupancy permit request for the Butler Stop LLC doing business as the Derby District, four seven five three, North one hundred and twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Community events.
Community events met on the twenty-ninth of October. They decided to not have the Santa breakfast this winter. However, they did plan out five dates for bingo through the winter. End report.
Thank you. Report to the administrator.
So there's been a lot of ongoing items in the administrator's office. We have been working diligently with the Brookfield Fire Department and the Butler Fire Department on the transition of the services. We've been working on finalizing the budget document. And then another thing that we've been working on is some of our storm water permit items. So those, I will be recapping a little bit more about that in the weekly update. But those are the three big things that we have been working on in the administrator's office. End of the report.
Thank you. New business, recognition of Officer Joel Fust's twenty-five years of service to the village of Butler. I will turn this over to the chief.
Come on, Cal.
That microphone, that microphone might have to be turned off.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'll start off by saying, does anyone remember where they were on October eighth in the year of two thousand? There should be one hand at least that's raised. That's the day that Officer Fust was hired here in the village of Butler with the police department. So twenty-five years, a quarter century. I looked at his picture from when he was sworn in, looks the same. So twenty-five years is a long time, but you worded it well. I just want to take the opportunity to honor twenty-five years of service for Officer Fust here in the village of Butler. Again, it's a long time and as we all know, the unofficial mayor of Butler. Everybody knows Officer Fust. He came through another street with Butler and stopped him where it's time for people to talk to him. He's touched countless lives in his time here with the police department. Both in emergency situations, he's just a day-to-day how he carries himself. So it's an honor to have the opportunity to work with him, members of our department. Thank you for being here as well. I'll keep it short because I know he has a long speech planned. So thank you for your family being here and I'll turn it over to Officer Fust to work through the safety words.
No pressure, right?
I don't think this thing's working.
It is, thanks.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to stand up here and accept this award, I assume. It's been an honor and privilege to serve the village of Butler for, I guess, more than twenty-five years. I was two years on the fire department before I came to the police department. So it's been an honor. I still get up, enjoy coming to work every day. So not a lot of people can say that in this line of work. And I think it's a true, true connection with the village, village staff, the village board members to support that us members of the police department can, and the good working relationship we have with everybody. So I just, I want to continue strong and, you know, another fifteen years ready?
Hey, ease up, ease.
Chief, you got a joke? You forgot about your joke. All right, so the chief forgot about his joke. Normally, everybody knows he has one joke that he says. For everybody, I'll have to pick up his slack. So my joke is probably a cheesy dad joke. So what is the, what did the police officer say to his tummy? You're under my vest.
Well done.
Well done. One more cheesy joke.
All right.
What, what did the grass, you know, David flow to? Gotcha.
Well, take that, I'll take it.
Thanks, chief. Thanks, thanks for taking that.
On behalf of the village and the police department, I have this award to present to Officer Joel Fust. It says, "In recognition of twenty-five years of dedication and exceptional service with the village of Butler Police Department."
Congratulations. Thought maybe, thought maybe the captain was gonna come up and say a few words. He looked excited to do so. Thank you, Joel.
Cap, did you want to say something? I mean, you ran up, you were running up, we thought you wanted, you sure? All right. Guess he doesn't.
Thank you very much. Item B, discussion and possible action on the twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty John's disposal contract for recycling and garbage disposal services.
Yes, so this contract is the third contract term for the village with regards to John's disposal. This one was a tad bit different. There was a tweaking of the language when it came to pollution insurance that the village attorney wanted to add. They complied and added that language that he wanted in there. And just some minor tweaks to what the previous contracts were with just some consistency in the wording that we didn't spot before. But, you know, again, providing the same, same level of service and the same price fluctuations of, I believe, it's like two to four percent, depending on what inflation and the costs of the goods sold are for that type of business. So we recommend approval of the contract.
I had one comment and then one, or two comments. Under item C six, it says that the contractor shall initially provide a new unit with one, one cart for garbage and a second for recycling. I'm assuming that means the original contract and not this contract.
I believe that that is for if there were any new homes that were built in the village.
Got it. And then just one comment is that I know, I note that Johns did a tremendously excellent job with helping us with the garbage during the flood. They were very responsive and it was very much appreciated. They went above and beyond.
Yes, they were very easy to deal with, very good, very responsive.
I don't see any other issues with the contract or questions. Does any of the board have any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the John's disposal contract for twenty-twenty-six to twenty-three.
I'll second it.
I heard Eric. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item C, discussion and possible action on resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three, a resolution amending the employee handbook to provide parental leave.
So this resolution is coming before you. I provided two weeks of my weekly update, kind of informing the village board of what I wanted to do and why I wanted to do it. Obviously, the workforce is ever-changing and what new, younger workers want is more flexibility and more of these types of benefits when it comes to parental leave. This will be for non-represented employees. As the police department, the representative, represented employees, they have their own parental leave policy that if they wanted to adopt this one, which is, in my opinion, better than that one, they would have to, you know, put that in their bargaining for their new contract next year. So this would be just for all non-represented employees. I believe, after taking a good hard look at this, this would not have any type of financial impact on the village because unlike with the representative employees that have to be here, you know, there with, if somebody's not here during that time, somebody would have to cover them for overtime. If somebody was missing in the DPW or in the administrative department, we would not have overtime for that. People are come and go and are gone every, every day. You know, and I shouldn't say every day, but, you know, every month in those departments and overtime is not necessary if they're gone. So there's not going to be any financial impact. I think this would be a really good benefit to offer new employees as they come in. It would be, make us a very attractive workplace. And again, in that parental leave policy would be two weeks for bonding, two weeks for medical recovery. So the, the father of the child would get the two weeks and the mother of the child would get the four weeks. So, and then that would take her to the short-term disability limit with the ICI coverage that we have. So if she needs more recovery time with regards to like a C-section or if there was a complicated pregnancy, she would be able to do that or take additional time. So this is, again, we're not subject to FMLA, which is another part of that. We're trying to kind of mimic that in a way to give some security. So if somebody was out for an extended period of time, they'd know that their job would be safe.
All right, I had a question on the, where it said if that currently or said employees that there's no FMLA for them, but if the FMLA would kick in due to some other contract or change in law or whatever, that this leave would be provided concurrently. So does that mean added on to it?
Concurrently would be at the same time. So it would run concurrent with, with any other FMLA change that might happen. So like, right now, we're not subject because we don't have fifty or more employees. So if we, if they change that and to bring it down to every employer has to, that FMLA with the federal government and the state would run concurrently, meaning at the same time as this policy.
Okay. I think that answers my question.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept resolution twenty-five twenty-three.
I was thinking it. I heard Pat and Bill. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? The only thing I had was under the payments language, do you have to state who the two weeks is for and who the, it's two weeks for the medical recovery, two weeks for the bonding? Yet, does that have to be restated a little bit?
That was provided, that the whole policy was written by our labor attorney.
Okay.
They, to, they recommend against putting specific labels in the policy.
Okay. Fair enough. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item D, under new business, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty-five dash one seven, an ordinance to amend section fourteen ninety-eight of the Butler Municipal Code regarding open burning and grills and heaters on balconies and porches.
So this ordinance, and I believe the next two, are outlined in the agreement with the city of Brookfield that we would be working with them to kind of mirror what their language states in their ordinance. So we have consistency in enforcement. Obviously, the, the village board does not necessarily have to approve the changes as there is no agreement or contract that allows municipal decision-making to be subserv, uh, by, subserviced by another municipality per, with an agreement. So this is to work in good faith, to adhere to the agreement to the best that we can. This is just adding in language that both their attorney and our attorney agreed is, is, is appropriate, that kind of gives the fire chief a little bit more handling on this. And I think that it's, I think the police department does get taken out of the enforcement mechanism if I'm remembering correctly, Chief Cast and that, that ordinance.
Really, it's minor changes and most of the wording was pretty much the same, especially with the use of grills and balconies and stuff like that. Really, I'm set in there that either the police chief or fire chief could authorize like burning, especially like grasses and stuff like that. And we wanted to have just a little bit more control on that, especially with the density of the housing. And we don't smell a lot like burning the grasses, especially like, we have a burning in Brookfield, three from burn, October, November, so from November on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays. And that is suspended right now because we have in our language that the heat and hot has made high, extremely very high or extreme fire danger, you're not allowed to burn. So we're just trying to apply the same principles to just kind of like minimize any type of outbreak in the fire. People can still, you know, have that, it's just a matter of trying to regulate that to a certain extent rather than just.
Did, did we add that?
And, and that, that, the ordinance that we have here would not be the same as, as Brookfield with regards to that burning on Tuesdays, Thursdays. That's, yeah, okay.
If somebody wants to burn, that there would be a mechanism like, hey, it's super dry out right now. We're under a high or extremely high fire danger, moving on, there's a mechanism for us to potentially like, hey, there's a hand.
Correct. It makes sense to be consistent.
Yeah, and I don't see any issues with not having the police chief involved in that. No, no, no more than. Yeah, I think it's great. Right.
Is there a motion?
With that, make a motion to accept the twenty-five seventeen ordinance as written.
I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item E, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty-five dash one eight, an ordinance to amend section thirty dash three oh seven of chapter thirty, article eleven of the municipal code of ordinances.
So this is an amendment to the large gathering permit. Before, now, it wasn't super detailed on the approval process and the review of the police department and the fire department. So again, this is part of the, the agreement with Brookfield, but Chief Cast and I had talked and we agreed that this needs to occur to kind of give an outline of, and better describe the, the flow of things. So they, you know, you make an application, it goes to the fire department, it goes to the police department, they review it, they give their comments and their recommendations, then it comes to the board with that. We were kind of doing, we were doing that prior to this, but this just puts it into, into code, kind of putting the policy, the unwritten policy into code, saying that this is what needs to happen. So that's the largest part of that is getting the police and the fire department to review and provide comments for the board to consider when looking at the large gathering permit.
That would be for, for people over, or number of persons over a hundred, or is it more?
I believe it's five hundred.
Five hundred, okay. So that part stays the same. The only comment I would have is under section thirty dash three oh seven, number two. It says the administrator dash clerk may also submit a copy of the application. Could you change that wording to maybe could consider or might consider submitting? Or just change that language in number two a little bit?
Yeah, I, I can if you put that into, if somebody puts that into the motion.
Okay. What, what, what do you want to? I, I would like it to read, it's not clear to me on number two if the, the clerk will or will not submit it to the sheriff's office if they deem it necessary.
It may also.
So I say, it says it may also. So if the wording could be might consider submitting a copy of the application.
Isn't that what may also actually is?
Yeah, well, at least in, in a legal sense, may is upon the discretion, they may send it to, to them. That's at least my.
Is that what that's saying there? Like, in other words, you wouldn't really have to in that instance?
You would not have to legally. That's, that's kind of the difference between shall and may.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that works for me, though. But then would you need the words at the end, if they deem it necessary? If you're already considering it?
It could be duplicate of, I'm just, I'm carrying forward the language that's already in the code. That's how it's written currently. I'm just, we moved it around with the additions there, but that's what it currently says is that the administrator sent it to the sheriff.
If they think it's justified, okay.
Correct.
I would, I would make the motion to approve this and then only on the wording of number two, delete the words, if they deem it necessary. Because I think that's saying it twice. That's my motion. Is there a second?
With that, I'll make a second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item F, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty-five dash one nine, an ordinance to amend section fourteen dash one sixty-two of the Butler Code of Ordinances pertaining to the use of fireworks.
So to just quickly answer the question that was posed by Ms. Benjamin, the, the, what is currently written is that fireworks are allowed if you have a permit. So that's, we're not changing any type of wording that says that you couldn't before and now you can, you could if you had the permit. So if you don't have a permit, you still can't be lighting off fireworks. So the fireworks that were going off on Fourth of July this past year, those were illegal fireworks that were getting set off because they did not have a permit issued by the village board. So this provides the opportunity to have a fireworks display if, let's just say, the Optimist Club wanted to, as part of Hot Rods on Hampton, for whatever reason, they wanted to have a fireworks display down at the park. This would provide the avenue for them to go about getting approval for the fireworks. So that's, again, kind of what this is, there's changes again that Chief Cast wanted to have in there with regards to, again, consulting the fire department and consulting the police department in the conditioning of those fireworks and those displays and the ability to terminate the permit if the conditions were, you know, if we approve it, let's just say, two weeks ahead of time. And then the event, the day comes and it's extreme fire danger. Or we find out that the contractor that they're using isn't insured or isn't legitimate, they can then cancel that permit immediately and prevent that fireworks display from happening. So that's kind of the changes that, that were added in there.
Couple of years ago, there was that stand on Silver Spring that would sell fireworks. And there was something goofy with the permit. They would, I don't know the exact details, but there was something, they would sell a permit, but it wasn't like officially.
They, I believe that they went through the conditional use permit.
Correct.
Process, and that's outlined, I think, in some section of the zoning code.
And, and I think they were selling permits or they, they had the opportunity to sell this permit to whoever's buying the firework under the impression that that permit had allowed them to use that. So the language here that has to be approved by the village board is good. My question would be, what are we writing this then? What happens if it's ourselves doing it? Do we need to have a village board approval or the fire and the police department have to approve the village fireworks?
Well, I would say, I mean, technically, yes, but I would say that the, us approving the contract that we do every year with Wolverine fireworks, part of that includes the, the permit. In the packet, I always include the, the permit, the permit that would get filled out from Wolverine that we then send them to signal our permission to conduct fireworks display.
And that's my next line. In that, then, it says a fee, a fee is, in the fee, the fee schedule, are we paying a fee to ourselves for a permit?
No.
No, it's waived. It's been waived.
So also with that, it says that if found to violate any of the conditions, the fire and police chiefs shall immediately terminate. Does that mean they're the only ones that can terminate and not us?
Well, I would say that if they, if we had, let's just say, a condition that, again, they, I guess we could include language that the village board is also one of those bodies that could. I would, I would advise that they are kept in there because, again, if there's a condition in this, there's a day of, so one of the conditions is, you know, you shall not do this if there's an extremely high fire danger. And there's no, you know, that day it becomes extremely high, there's no time for a village board meeting to, to eliminate that permit. So I think that adding that, you know, could be if there was time, if we found that they were in violation, there was time for the village board to revoke the permit, that could be something that gets added in there.
So my next question would be, this is saying the village board, the fire chief, also and/or, I guess, is, so do they need to weigh in on? It's like if they say, no, you can't do it, and we as the village board say, well, we don't care what you say. Do we have the right to continue on or do all of us now as a board and those two have to be in agreeance? That would be my question.
That, that's a good question and I would have to consult with the village attorney. I can't answer that right now.
With that question being said, this board has shown time and time again, that's not how we operate, though we always ask the chief what their opinions are and, and help guide us on some of the decisions we make. So that's really not what I'm saying, but I just think now we're adding two more people into this whole gist of yea or nay. Did they come up while we're doing that and they vote? I mean.
I took it as the board approves the permit initially.
The initial permit.
If, if conditions are violated.
But I don't, that's not how I see it. Am I, which one of us is?
Again, I would have to probably take a look at this outside of, right now, just so that I can properly, you know, review it. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, I'm sorry. So, I mean, if you wanted to, we can, you know, this isn't like an immediate thing, so we can always table it to next time and I can.
I'm not trying to make it difficult, I just, I just, if we're gonna make this, I want to know how, how we're supposed to address it when it comes before us. And really, the only thing coming before us so much is just our fireworks, but we need to have them with us, that's, you know, and I respect their opinions a hundred percent. But I just want to know how that works.
I'm with you on that. It, it's not clear, usually like what we would do is we'd send it to the police and fire before it came to us. Like, they would give their recommendation and the board would vote on it.
Correct, so that's, that, I, again, I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe that's kind of what I, that we say, think that I put in there. Again, I'm trying to remember back. And then after it was approved, you know, with the conditions recommended by the police or fire chiefs, if those conditions were violated, then, then that would come back to if they wanted to terminate it.
So could a resident that wants to do their own private fireworks, they could apply for a permit?
In theory, yes.
In theory, yes.
They always could, right?
They've, they've always been able to. There's no.
Is there anybody?
Ever do it.
Ever do it.
No, and, and it would, I mean, and, and odds are, it would never, it would never, it would never pass the, the village board.
I mean, most, I mean, there's some beautiful stuff going off, but I'm sure they don't have permits for it. The guy at whatever it was, one hundred and twenty-sixth, he had a great display last Fourth of July. It was almost as good as the parks.
I had one other question here. I want to, where did I see it? There was, oh, okay, so number two on that. No person may use fireworks or a device listed under sections fourteen dash one sixty while attending a permitted fireworks display. So would that mean that while the main show is going on, someone else can't bring their own fireworks?
Correct, and again, this is, this is previous language that was included, that was in the ordinances prior. So I just included that as I, there's multiple sections that we were adjusting, so I think I just carried that through.
Okay.
But yeah, if there, if there's a fireworks event going off, it is my belief that obviously it would be prohibited, that they can't say, well, fireworks are getting lit off here, so it's permitted right now, so I'm gonna light off my own, like, in the immediate vicinity.
Well, to be honest with you, that did happen here at the park.
Oh, yeah.
Years back.
Oh, this year.
No, 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 I'm talking years back, it did happen. Where's?
Chief, if you want to put your, because we're.
Chief, if you want to put your, because we're.
That language, my understanding is that language, because permits been uh full and approved. That somebody can't just show up and light off fireworks under that permit.
Permit.
All right. And so that's what that's meant to, okay. Is that there is a uh, and the permitting process is just uh for us to review to. Insight into our considerations that ultimately you approve. We have the same thing in Brookfield. Uh, where ultimately the elected officials approve the permit, we just provide our insights on. This is what uh what we have to comply with under the state laws, under the ordinances, under the N M P A codes. And then uh once the day comes. As long as those conditions are still met, then you can go ahead, but uh you might. In previous years, Fourth of July, you might have a severe drought. Although it wasn't that long ago where we had to potentially seriously consider suspending the fireworks. And so those are the types of things. But we're really kind of just advising it where we want to have information to make sure that. Um, that they have, that they're insured, that they're licensed, uh, that they have the experience to do it, that they. Calculated, now it's like wind speed, their fallout zones, uh, stuff like that. So we can get into all those things. And then ultimately we provide you our just. Uh, recommendations or thoughts on it. We ultimately approve it. Uh, and then once that permit's approved, it applies to that particular person or company that provided. Uh, that put that permit, not to somebody attending and trying to light off their fireworks under that permit.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ben, do you want to rework this and bring it back to us?
Yeah, I can, I can.
If need be, right? I mean, just just look into that.
Just a few little things and.
Yeah.
Do we need to put in there that if the village does it or National Night Out does it, a fee will not apply? Or does that not pertain?
I can include it um or, you know, as part of the the part of the. Item on the agenda, uh, just like Hot Rods on Hampton, we include language in the in the item to waive the permit fee. So I can just add that in the in the language and just say, and you know, approval of the fireworks permit and with a waiver of fees.
I think it should be good to, because then we're following the our own ordinance and our language.
Sure.
No, no use paying for a permit, but we would still go through the process.
So with that, with if you, if you're going to follow through with the motion to table, I would say, uh, if you can please specify the two, the two areas that you want. Just so then I can have it on the record.
Okay, I'll try to remember it. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to table this item F. Uh, and the fireworks, and I would like the administration to go back and uh add language about waiving. The fee if it is a um village function. And then also just verify the wording in section one. Or I think it'd be A one, just as to um. The the issuance, the issuance of the permit. Actually, all of section fourteen dash one sixty-two is just relook at that and um. Verify the wording, I guess would be my table.
And then for that, basically, like who who would have the ability to cancel it or what the process would be for that?
I don't know, but the canceling, but just how how is the fire chief and the police chief? Involved in the issuing of the permit, right? I mean, it's the village board and do they come up with us? And do we all have, their their votes are in, I guess is what I'm saying.
Sure, yeah, they would. Obviously, they wouldn't have any type of vote, but I can, I can clarify all of that. Yep.
That that works. So that was my table.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to table this item. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item G, discussion and possible action on resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four. A resolution to rescind resolution number twenty-five twenty-one entitled. Resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a two hundred twenty thousand dollar general obligation promissory note.
So this resolution and the next one are coming before you as um, I'm gonna. Be gentle here with my language, but we had bond counsel create the. Resolution to approve the borrowing for the capital fund expenditures for next year. We sent it to the bank, the bank said, yep, this is fine. We put it in front of you, you passed it. When we sent that resolution to the bank and we were in the process of closing out the the borrowing, they said, oh, well, we need this resolution signed. And I stated that we can't sign a resolution that wasn't passed by the village board. It was basically a resolution stating the exact same thing, except that it was formatted differently and there was some language that was different. Um, after conversations with the bond counsel and the village attorney, um, they both recommended that the village. Pass a resolution rescinding the original um borrowing authorization and then put forward the. Bank's version of the resolution. Um, I don't know where the where the miscommunication was between bond counsel, us and the bank was, but. Uh, the village attorney stated that we should just go with what the bank says, since the bank has stated that their resolution is. What they mandatorily need to have. So again, I apologize for that uh that. Issue that's happened, but this this resolution is getting the same thing done as just passing the bank's version of the resolution.
And the lawyers are perfectly good with that, for my, what you're saying.
Correct.
Just kind of strange the bank would follow or that they would need a resolution in the first place, but. I guess we'll do what they need. Okay, so then with this, uh, we're gonna uh. This one would make this one null and void, and then item H is then the new one.
Correct.
Okay. Any other additional questions or do I have a motion? And this is just on item G. I move uh that we. Approve resolution twenty-five twenty-four.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item H, discussion and possible action on resolution twenty-five twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the borrowing of two hundred twenty thousand dollars. Providing for the issuance and sale of a general obligation promissory note. Therefore, in living a tax in connection therewithen.
With that, I'll make a res, uh, make a motion for resolution twenty-five twenty-five to be accepted.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I did have one clarifying question on the. Do we have to do it? I know the the bank listed out at two hundred twenty thousand plus interest. Do we have to put that into our resolution?
No.
Okay. With that, all in favor, say aye. On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item I, discussion and possible action on right-of-way alteration permit for J J Enterprises. Agent for Midwest Flexible Hose located fifty-one eighty-one North one hundred twenty-fifth.
So the Midwest Hose is looking to alter their uh, the way that their semi trucks. Uh, back into the building. Currently, they back in perpendicular to the building. It blocks uh two lanes of traffic and the the semi truck is on their neighbor across the street's property. Um, they have a good relationship with the neighbor across the street, but their grass has gotten torn up, their parking, they have a new parking lot, they don't want that to get ruined, so. They're changing it to be more at an angle. Um, the road itself would still be, both lanes would be blocked during this time. Um, but it wouldn't, the semi truck would not be on anybody's property and would not extend into the intersection. Um, I had uh talks with Chief Zaluzki about that, D P W about it. Um, and the contractor, um, we are all in agreeance that this is uh. Still, you know, still a a safe uh way to to conduct this. Um, it's just a little bit unfortunate with the space that they have that they have to be blocking both lanes of traffic, but I. Would almost prefer that over one lane of traffic, just because then you have a semi truck blocking a line of sight. And there's potential for crashes to occur if somebody's not paying attention and they're trying to get around the semi, so. Um, this right-of-way alteration permit is just to allow them to uh alter that driveway. Um, and get get that more on an angle to get off the neighbor's property.
They're just taking four feet of the curbway, right?
Correct. Correct.
And they're keeping everything else?
Correct. There, the the building itself is going to get altered a little bit. They turn in building permits for that, but yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the alter right-of-way for uh J J Enterprises.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Last item J, discussion on the twenty twenty-six proposed budget. I had asked Ben to put this in just as a agenda item because on our. Initial meeting, we just didn't have the complete budget. We've all been sent the draft of the budget. Uh, the wording is going to change a little bit, but I wanted just to have. Give the board an opportunity if they had any questions once they actually saw all the numbers. Um, to bring this back.
And I did provide the board with that question, the answer to the question with regards to the, I believe, with the sewer charges. Um, with if with the twenty-five versus the fifty versus zero. Um, I did also want to um update the board. I did make a slight change in the D P W budget where. The um insurance numbers came in about. Two to three thousand dollars lower than what I had initially budgeted for. We just got those numbers. So I allocated um more money into the D P W budget for street maintenance and tree, trees and shrub maintenance.
Was that insurance on the general liability part of it or what?
The the whole thing.
The whole thing.
Yeah, the whole package. I budgeted for eighty thousand and I think it came in at seventy-six.
Okay. I didn't have anything other than that. I just wanted to give the op, the board the opportunity to to ask questions if need be. And no actions needed on that and no other questions. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Adjourned at six forty-eight. Thank you.